Okay, welcome to the July 16, 2018 meeting of the City of Pacifica Planning Commission. Roll call please.
Commissioner Kraske.
Present.
Commissioner Rubenstein.
Here.
Commissioner Gordon.
Here.
Chair Campbell.
Here.
Vice Chair Clifford.
Here.
Commissioner Stedjic.
Here.
Commissioner Niblin is absent.
Thank you. All right, we'll have a salute to the flag. Commissioner Stedjic, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, on to administrative business. First, approval of the order of agenda. Commissioner Gordon.
I move that we approve the order of agenda.
Commissioner Ruben-- oh, Commissioner Clifford.
I second that.
All right, motion second, please vote. All right, that passes. On to the approval of the minutes for the June 18, 2018 meeting. Anybody want to move to approve that? Okay, Commissioner Rubenstein.
I move to approve the minutes.
Commissioner Clifford.
I'll second that motion.
Motion second, please vote. All right, that passes unanimously. We don't-- looks like we don't need a liaison. And moving on, oral communications, all right. So this portion of the agenda is available to the public to address the Planning Commission on any issue within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission that is not on the agenda tonight. The time allowed for any speaker would be three minutes. If anybody does want to speak right now, they'd fill out a card located in the back of the room and bring it up here. I don't see any cards up here, I don't see any movement, so we're gonna move past that. No consent items either today, so we're gonna go right to our-- well, we're gonna go to a continued public hearing on the construction of a three-story, 3,643 square foot, single-family residence on Beaumont Boulevard, 327 Beaumont Boulevard. And the recommended action tonight is to continue to a date to be determined. Staff report, please.
On June 4, 2018, the Planning Commission held a public hearing for this project for the above-mentioned development permit, which is for 327 Beaumont Boulevard. During the public hearing, the commissioners requested additional analysis and information regarding several topics, which included but were not limited to the location of two heritage trees proposed for removal and the engineering considerations related to multiple ongoing construction projects in the vicinity of the subject site. The hearing commission continued the hearing to June 18, 2018. On June 18, 2018, the hearing was continued again at the applicant's request to July 16, 2018, to afford them more time to bring in the additional materials. The applicant has since explained to staff that they need more time and we're going to provide us with additional materials by the middle of this month around this time, but we haven't received any materials as yet. So due to the uncertain timing of their summit, all staff recommends continuing the public hearing to a date to be determined. Once staff receives the materials from the applicant, it'll schedule a new public hearing and provide new published and mailed public notices.
Great, thank you. Any questions for staff on this? Okay, let's see, Commissioner Stedjic.
I'm curious if there's any way we can direct staff to allow the applicant of 327 Beaumont to obtain the engineering consideration materials from the properties on both sides of them, basically allow their engineer access to the soils and hill reports on both sides of their property.
The property on the right side of the subject site is developed, so there were three properties which are under development or they have permits, and they were looking at those properties to see what the soils' conditions are there. So is the commission's direction that they should include in their engineering analysis properties which are on both sides of the subject site?
Yeah, I don't even think we need to direct staff, but I think it just might be useful for them to have a copy of the proximate engineering reports from other properties, you know, within a couple hundred feet or something.
Those materials are available, and we can remind the applicant that we have them on file for the recent development projects.
That'd be great, thank you.
Running.
Okay, I don't see any more questions for staff. I'll bring it back to the commission. Okay, Commissioner Clifford.
I'm going to move that it continue to a date to be determined.
And Commissioner Gordon.
Second.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second, please vote. And that passes unanimously. Okay, on to new public hearings. First up is an amendment to use permit, UP-804-97, and a parking exception to increase the number of residents from 12 to 16 persons and to deviate from required off-street parking standards at the special care facility known as Sun Valley Chateau Pacifica at 689 Ladera Way. The recommended SECO action is a category-- is a Class 1 categorical exemption and the other recommended-- I'm sorry, the recommended action is to approve as conditioned. All right, staff report, please.
Good evening, I'm contract planner Ranu Agarwal. The project before you is an amendment to an existing use permit to increase the number of residents from 12 to 16 persons, age 60 and over, at a special care facility known as Sun Valley Chateau Pacifica at 689 Ladera Way. The applicant has also requested a parking exception to allow for a reduction in required off-street parking. The property has a general plan designation of low-density residential and is in the R1 zoning district. Pacifica Municipal Code Section 9-4.273.1 defines special care facilities in part as state-authorized certified or licensed family care home, foster home, a group home serving mentally disordered or otherwise handicapped person, dependent and neglected children, or elderly persons on a 24-hour-per-day basis. Per PMC Section 9-4.401B9, special care facilities for more than six persons are allowed as a conditional use in the R1 zoning district. Subject to approval of a use permit and confirmance to certain criteria applicable specifically to special care facilities where the criteria is provided in PMC Section 9-4.2315. As required by state law, Health and Safety Code Section 1566.3, the Pacifica Municipal Code allows special care facilities for six or fewer residents, not including staff, as a permitted use in all residential zoning districts. With regards to this specific project, prior to 1997, the subject facility was operated as a special care facility for up to six residents, which are allowed or which are permitted use in all residential districts. In 1997, the city council approved use permit UP-804-97 on appeal for operation of a special care facility for up to 12 ambulatory residents, not including staff, based on the planning department records within the existing two-story residential structure at the site. In March 2001, DSS, Department of Social Services, granted the facility a license to operate with a total capacity of 12 residents. 60 years are over, all of whom could be non-ambulatory. And then in 2007, effective February of that year, they granted the facility a license to increase the capacity from 12 to 16, 12 non-ambulatory and four ambulatory persons. In either of these instances, the planning department doesn't have a record or evidence that they obtained planning permissions to house non-ambulatory residents or to increase the capacity from 12 to 16 residents. And building permits-- building permit records indicate that there were modifications made to the building between 1997 and 2006, which are described on page 19 of the agenda packet in Table 1 and paragraph below that. The facility in its current form is 3,715 square feet in area, contains 11 bedrooms and six bathrooms. Four bedrooms and three bathrooms are on the first floor, which houses seven beds. Seven bedrooms and three bathrooms are on the second floor, which accommodates nine beds. Additionally, there is a living and family room on the first floor with a kitchen and a family room with an exterior staircase on the second floor. There are also decks. First floor has a deck to the rear of the property, and there are two second-story decks at the front of the building above the entry porch and the garage entrance. The facility currently houses four non-ambulatory and 12 ambulatory residents, and they are served by three attendants during the daytime, and one attendant is present at the facility at night in 12-hour shifts. The current application, which is the use permit modification, was filed in 2015 to allow for four ambulatory and 12 non-ambulatory residents, age 60 and over. The project requires, or the modification to this use permit requires, that the project meet findings per PMC Section 9-4.3303 for approval of a use permit and satisfy criteria for special care facilities per PMC Section 9-4.2315B. The detailed discussions regarding these findings and criteria pertaining to the use permit approval are on page 20 to 26 of the agenda packet. The major issues that were identified with respect to these findings and criteria pertain to compliance with Health and Safety Building and Fire Codes for housing non-ambulatory residents, where there are some upgrades needed to the building in order to accommodate non-ambulatory clients. Condition of approval 22 and 23 specify these upgrades, which need to be installed to the satisfaction of the fire chief. And additionally, Building Division's conditions of approval 16 to 18 are provided to ensure that it complies with the requirements of the building code. The applicant has also requested a parking exception to allow for a reduction in required parking. The Pacifica Municipal Code does not specifically include parking standards for special care facilities. The category which most closely comports is nursing and convalescent homes, sanitariums, asylum and children's home that require one car space per three beds. And the parking requirement using that category is five spaces. And that the applicant has asked for a parking exception to reduce that to three spaces. In staff opinion, the true parking demand for the facility is three parking spaces, and it has a maximum of three attendants every day who care for residents who themselves do not drive. Also, the families are unlikely to visit daily according to the information provided by the applicant, and when they do visit weekly, which is more likely, there is parking available on Ladera Way. So in staff assessment, two space parking exceptions pursuant to PMC Section 9-4.2824 can be made in this instance. The site currently accommodates two cars in the driveway in front of the garage, where a standard parking space would encroach the Ladera Way right of way somewhat. And then third, parking the plans show as located in the side yard to the right of the building, where currently they have a recreational vehicle parked. So staff has included conditions for for the applicants to obtain an encroachment permit from the Department of Engineering so that their status of the parking, which is in the driveway to the garage, can be formalized. And that's a conclusion staff came to, that would be appropriate, is because the encroachment does not impede or obstruct the sidewalks, so the circulation in the neighborhood is not going to be impacted. With regards to the RV, there are certain standards that RV parking on has to meet, RV storage has to meet on-site. And this does not-- this recreational vehicle particularly does not meet those standards. So staff has included a condition of approval for the removal of the RV and provision of a standard car parking space in that location. In addition to that, if the Planning Commission so wishes, they can consider provision of another parking spot, with the exception that they could be tandem parking in the side yard, where there is space with the removal of the RV, to have tandem parking for two cars. So in conclusion, in staff assessment, the project meets the applicable findings and criteria in the Pacifica Municipal Code. It also qualifies for Class 1 categorical exemption under SECO Guideline Section 15301. And staff recommends approval with conditions as recommended in the draft conditions. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Before we turn it over to the commission, I just wanted to acknowledge that we have two additional staff persons here to assist with any questions. They were integral in the technical aspect of preparing this report. Jerry Schnell, who's our building official, and Clyde Preston, who is a fire inspector.
Great, thank you. Thank you for being here. Okay, questions for staff? Commissioner Clifford.
Okay, I got a long list. I'll start with the planner. Do you have a state definition of what a special care facility is? We've got the city's definition, but I didn't hear a state definition, nor did I see one.
But they are known as living assisted facilities. I'm not specifically knowledgeable about what the specific definition of a living assisted facility, assisted living facility that the state has, because the state licensed the facility in 2007. So the assumption is that the state evaluated the status of the facility and its compliance with the State Health and Safety Code. We were, as city staff, looking at or focusing on the codes that the facility has to meet per city requirements.
Okay, so you don't actually know what the state's definition of special care facility is personally, and you didn't think it was important to know that? Correct?
I personally am not knowledgeable.
Our review focused on the municipal code requirements for approval of the permit.
Okay, thank you. How many and what types of patients are allowed under the current city permit?
12 ambulatory clients according to the current use permit, which is the permit that was approved in 1997.
The staff report states that the planning department's records do not contain any records of the facility operator obtaining permission from the City of Pacifica to house up to 12 non-ambulatory patients, in a total of 16 patients. Have any new records come to light at this time?
Not from that-- not-- our research hasn't indicated any records pertaining to those two issues.
Okay, thank you. Now I'm gonna move to the fire marshal. Is the fire marshal fire inspector?
The fire marshal is my supervisor. I'm the fire inspector.
You're the fire inspector?
Yes.
Okay. Well, during my site visit to the facility, I noticed that the interior stairs were partially blocked by powered chairlifts, and I wanted to know that if under those circumstances, you can still count them as full stairs under the two-stairway requirement. I'm just, you know, just as a hypothetical, we have a fire at night, they lose power. Is that still a safe exit for those people?
Inspector Klaus Solinski is the primary lead, is the assigned Pacifica inspector for the project. He's on medical leave for these few weeks, and so I'm standing in for him. That wasn't brought to our attention, and I'm not sure what his inspection entailed with the second floor or the exiting issue. My understanding is that the only remaining fire items was the fire alarm system. And so I was briefed on this. My background is in fire alarm. I was an alarm technician prior to getting into the fire department. And what we were going to do was to meet with the owner and her alarm company to discuss the modifications that are required to bring the system into full compliance. I'm not aware of the exiting issue and perhaps the building.
As a fire inspector, is it safe to consider an evacuation under a fire at night, smoke, no power, up to 12 non-ambulatory patients from a facility that has one staircase partially blocked?
The--
Yeah, can I answer that?
Sure, Jerry.
I was at the inspection, and there's two-- oh, I'm sorry. There's two stairways, and it's less than 10 occupants, so they have to be 36 inches wide. So the exterior staircase is 36 inches, the interior's 36 inches, but that seat does encroach. I don't know the allowable tolerances for encroachment into the stairway for that seat. I know there's encroachment for the handrails and things, but the seat, I'm not sure. So that's something that we're gonna have to check on. But it does encroach down to about 16 inches, so it is--
I heard you say less than 10, but there's more than 10.
On the second floor, occupants of the second floor.
Occupants of the second floor.
If there's less than 10, there's 16 total. There's 16 total.
There's 16 total plus three people during the day and one person at night.
Right, but there's only-- there's less than 10 occupants on the second floor. That's, I believe that's one of the conditions of the planning approval. There's less than 10 occupants, therefore the hallways are allowed.
So the employees don't count?
Well, this is where--
I really want to understand.
But the thing is, if there was more than 10 occupants on the second floor, then the hallways would have to be 44 inches wide, the stairways would have to be 44, so nothing complies. So by saying that there's only less than 10 occupants on the second floor, you have to have two exits, minimum 36 inches wide, and--
And you don't know about--
And I don't know what you're allowed to encroach.
How much you're allowed to encroach.
Because it's just the width of the seat. Now, I know they have some seats that'll wrap around a corner and get out of the way, or go up on a landing and get out of the way, but I didn't--
But you would need to look at these again and see if they were--
But I need to look at that, because looking at it, it is pretty tight.
I know I personally had difficulty by myself going up and down those stairs with that encroachment.
I think it goes down to about 16 inches or 17 inches, right where the seat is.
Okay, and I'm gonna go back to the fire marshal now if I can. In terms of public safety for both the residents and for our first responders, is this a good scenario?
We would have to base it on what the code, what the minimum requirements are. And from the building department, if the two exits are required, we would want the 36.
I'm not hearing that we know yet whether or not the restrictions changes that, whether those-- whether we have, in fact, two stairways for safe access.
There are two stairways, they're both 36 inches, but I don't know the tolerance is allowed to encroach for a seat like that. I just don't know. We can-- we'll definitely find out.
Okay, thank you very much for those answers. I appreciate that. I guess I'm done with questions for staff.
Okay, Commissioner Stedjic.
I'd like to thank Commissioner Clifford for that analysis. It's the squeeze points in a fire, smoke inhalation, pretty interesting stuff. Is this facility inspected by Department of Social Services also? Okay, is that an annual one or?
I believe there are yearly inspections.
Okay, just as we speak, I'm looking online here, and it says it was, it's been inspected twice since January of this year, and designation residential care elderly on there. The recreational vehicle appears to be a residence. It appears to be occupied, and someone appears to be living there. When we push them off the property there, is there a way for us to waive Section 9-4.2808? So any-- say someone was living there, they weren't just pushed into an RV on the street?
I'm not sure I understood the question.
Is there any way to allow the RV to continue to remain there in a safe manner?
We were actually looking at removal of the RV because it didn't want to meet the provisions of RV storage. Even if it could do that, if we were to let the RV remain there, we wouldn't be-- we wouldn't have a parking space. And our parking exception analysis is based on at least three parking spaces being there, because there are three attendants in the facility and during the daytime. If there is parking available for them, then on that basis, we can make the findings for the parking exception.
It would likely run afoul of the city's accessory dwelling unit ordinance to allow someone to continue to live in there, even if we found the commission was able to grant an exception for the parking standard, which prohibits connecting utilities and allowing habitation. So I'm not sure that we're prepared to give a comprehensive response, but my sense would be we would not be able to accomplish allowing someone to live in that RV.
Say it was an uninhabited RV, would a simple six-foot hinged gate solve that problem if there was space in front to maintain that third parking space?
It likely would. I think that we were striving to resolve the code violation because the fence is not there. We didn't see a nexus or a relationship to needing the RV for operation of the facility. And lastly, its removal would enable the commission to consider allowing for a fourth parking space to reduce the parking exception.
Thanks, Kristen. Yeah, I took a look at their-- I took a look at the whole facility as much as I could there. It's an interesting place there. It appears to have absolutely no ambulatory patients. Everybody's bed bound, everybody's very old. Doesn't appear like any of those people own a car. Appears like there's very few vehicles that are not directly staff-related. Will this-- will this addition of folks require additional staff at that location?
Not to our knowledge. It's our understanding the state requirements are for three staff, given the 16 occupants of the facility as they are now. I think we have not found information that all 12 or 16 of the residents are non-ambulatory as those are defined. There may be people with certain limitations, but the applicant has indicated that only four non-ambulatory persons, as defined under state regulations, currently reside in the facility.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Rubenstein.
Yeah, just a quick question about the RV. Is it used for the operations for this facility, or is it-- is there a staff member living in there or a patient?
Our information from the applicant is that it was something they bought in 2015 to go camping, but it's just being stored there. It's not something that anybody is living there or it is inhabited.
Okay.
But the applicant can further elaborate on that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I don't have any more questions for staff, so I'm going to allow the applicant to come up and speak for 10 minutes.
At the podium.
My name is Rodhika Ranga, and I'm the owner of Sun Valley Chateau Pacifica.
Could you pull the mic down?
You're talking to the mic, please.
Thank you.
My name is Rodhika Ranga, and I'm the owner of Sun Valley Chateau Pacifica. And we've been serving our community for 18 years in Pacifica. And we've been serving our community for 18 years in Pacifica. We take care of elderly people, we take care of their meals, basically medication, daily living, supervision with everything. So here is the administrator, and he can tell you more about our operations.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Christian Toporcano, I've been administrating San Valley Chateau Pacifica for the last five years. We are dealing with residents with both impairments, physical and cognitive. Currently, we have 16 residents, as it's been mentioned before, four of them are bedridden. We have one lady with paralysis on the lower part of her body. We have three residents that are non-ambulatory totally. And then we deal with many residents that are coming in different conditions to our facility. They are discharged from rehabs as Lindamar or here in Manor Drive. And our main goal is to provide the families and their relatives, our residents, with a quality of life. So basically, our main goal is to try to improve their condition. So many of them are coming after, to give you a, a common example, breaking their hip at home. The physician states that they can go back home because they don't have enough supervision, so that is where they are referred to a place like ours. Through physical therapy and basically total attention, we try to improve their physical condition and obviously meet all their needs of their daily living activities.
Okay, thank you, just stay right there for a moment, let me see if there's any questions. Commissioner Gordon.
That's me.
Oh, that's you, Commissioner Clifford.
Okay. Let's start off with how many people you employ there?
We have between four and five persons working with us in every, any given day. Depending on, on what the specific daily living activities are, that means that we have some days when we have to give showers to 16 people based in a plan of care that is designed and approved by the families when they move in. We have every single day, three persons during the day shift from seven to seven with two hours of break. And there are days when we get a fourth person to, to assist the regular staff of three elements in order to be able to meet the needs, as I mentioned, in terms of giving showers or when we have a higher charge of work in the day. And in the nighttime, we have one person that is, is supervising the facility in order to make sure that everybody is safe. If somebody needs to be changed, or if they need to go to the bathroom in the nighttime, we have specific devices where a specific resident can touch a button in order to send a signal to the caretaker. So the caretaker will acknowledge that this specific resident needs assistance and will provide assistance depending on what the needs are.
Okay, so on some days during the week, you have four employees there?
Correct.
And do you also have, do you also stay there during the day? You're, you're the administrator, correct?
Sure, I, I stay there basically 120 hours a week in order to make sure that we provide the quality control that we are promising to the families when they move in. So I supervise the whole operation. I'm coming to the facility on Monday, bringing the, the groceries after doing the shopping, and I'm staying there till Saturday in the morning. Exception, some hours during the, during this time when I have to run certain errands related with the operation of the building.
Okay, and do you employ a cook, or is that also one of the jobs for your attendants?
I beg your pardon, I didn't understand the question.
Do you employ a cook or a dietitian? Are you the dietitian then? Are you buying the groceries?
Basically, my license covers that I'm trained in order to, to cover the medication part. We have a plan designed by a nutritionist in order to cover their needs in term of the meals. We are working with outsources in terms of physical therapy. Those persons are licensed by the state in order to provide those services. And once they come to our facility to, to provide their services to the residents, they also train our staff in order for them to be able to follow up and to provide to our residents the physical therapy more than just the insurance provide. Like, let's say two or three days. Once our staff is getting familiarized with the dynamic of the exercising that has to be done, then they can do it daily, sometimes more than once a day, based on the strength of each one of our residents. All those plans are, are individualized, and basically, the physical therapist decides how many repetitions has to be done, what type of exercise, how we're gonna improve the condition of certain resident with the exercises that there are available. We just learn from them, as they are the one that were studying this, and we're just following up with their instructions. Same in turn of, in terms of medication. We get direct instructions from the primary physician, I keep in touch with the specific medical office of each one of our residents. They give us instructions on what medications to offer, when to stop them, when to add new medications. So we're just following instructions based on, on the experience.
What I'm really trying to get at is how many people come to the facility. Now, you, you've said that you do have physical therapists come. Do you have, like, visiting nurses come on occasion, or doctors? You did say physical therapist, what about respiratory therapist? How many people are cycling through the facility on a daily basis, is what I'm trying to get at?
Probably, I will, I will answer weekly, because we are a small facility, and I will say that weekly, probably, we have two to three persons, each one less than one hour inside the facility. Never a physician, but sometimes the physician's office sends a nurse to, to check different aspects of the residence. So as an average, I would say three persons weekly.
Okay, now, this again is in terms of, of traffic flow and, and circulation and such. I would like to know how often and how your patients are taken to doctor's appointments, hospital appointments, dentist appointments. You know, you know, emergency care, how often does that happen, say in a week?
Probably, that would be more like every three months, four months. We have residents that they are seeing the doctor once a year, only because the state of California is requiring to have an update of a physician report. So for this reason, they don't have any physical or mental issue to address specifically, but they just need to, to go for a checkup in order for us to get the paperwork that it is required. It's a physician report. So each one of the residents goes at least once to a doctor, but if we have unusual events, we call 911. I would say within this year, we called 911 twice. Because there was a situation where we wasn't sure what's the right approach. The resident was acting in a different way. When you're living with somebody 24/7, you kind of know their behavior. So when we see a different behavior, in this particular case, was a gentleman who has the Parkinson disease. We sent him in to the hospital in order to be checked. Was nothing to worry about, just some, some dehydration, so he's been sent back. Now, it's not an exact science, like, these type of events can happen frequently or never. We hope to be able to, to take care of them in order not to have this type of events, but it's not an exact science.
So I'm, I'm hearing that they never go to the dentist? Cause you're talking about a, a, a phys, physical at a doctor's office once a year. So you, you've never had an instance where one of your patients, patients needs to go to the dentist also?
Yes, but also there are unusual events. Most of our residents are using denture. We are speaking of an age group of 85, 90 years old, some of them close to 100. So there are exceptions, but most of them, unless their denture breaks, they, they don't go to the dentist.
Okay.
So medically stable, they come there, we are a residential care facility, we are not a rehab place. So basically, they are medically stable. So in case they get a cold or they get sick like any of us, then we call the doctor and make appointments. So they don't go usually regularly to a doctor, you know, weekly or bi-weekly or monthly.
No, but as, as an older person, I'm not quite the age that you're talking about, but as an older person, I know that issues come up on a fairly regular basis. For, for my age, which is 72, I find that I have to go to the doctor fairly often, or the dentist, or I have to go to the hospital for some test or something. So I am a little surprised that people much older than I am are not having to do that. But that, but that, but that's really neither here nor there. I'm just trying to find out how many people are actually coming to your facility on a routine basis. So you, you don't have, you have, you do have nurses occasionally come, that's correct?
One, a person comes there like with a broken hip from a hospital. Then we have a nurse coming regularly or a physical therapist until they become stable. So that, that happens like for about two weeks, I think, you know?
Sometimes more.
They, they, two weeks, three weeks, you know, because medical won't pay more than that. So basically, that's when we have more traffic, you know, if a person has this type of problem.
Okay, and how, how oft, you, you said that it was fairly often that you get people from either Manor or, or Lindamar? How often do you actually get people who are just coming?
Well, basically, it's as often as we have an opening. We have residents, they've been with us for six, eight years now. So we get them, eight years ago, when they had the need to be placed in a, in a facility with the assisted living, and that was it. So, and you mentioned, oh, people in this age group, they need to go to see the doctor. Basically, our clients, they have a specific diagnosis. And this diagnosis is already approached, like, they have either dementia or Parkinson, and this is controlled by the medication. So basically, they have a stable life with the quality that their condition allows them to have. So it's not that they go often to see the doctor. Sometimes, as I said, there are clients, we have specific clients, they've been in the last three, four years, only once a year to the doctor, and this because we require the families to follow up with the state procedure and to bring us a new physician report. But other than this, they, they didn't even have to go to the doctor, because they were stable, the medication is keeping them stable, so there is no, no physical or mental issue with them.
Thank you very much for that answer, I appreciate it. And again, I'm really only trying to get at how much actual traffic is at your facility. You said, you mentioned eight patients, so that would mean that you would have another eight that are newer than those patients that have been...
Correct.
So some are very new, and have more, more people coming into stabilized, physical therapy, whatever? Is that, is that a true statement?
Sure, I will, I will give you the example of our newest client, Mr. Carlos Martinez moved with us.
I really don't want to know his name, I don't want to get into medical records.
Okay, the gentleman, the gentleman moved with us through the Institute of Aging. Institute of Aging has a social worker that was looking for a place, as ours, to, to have him start living there. The social worker came in February, he moved in. Between February and March, she came every two weeks. After March, she came, probably March and April, one time a month. And currently, she just called to see if the situation is stable, but she's not making visits. In terms of his health, the gentleman is missing a limb, so he has probably two to three appointments monthly, because they are adjusting a prosthesis. In this case, they have, through the insurance, an arrangement with Ready Wheels. Ready Wheels come, picks the resident up in probably 10 minutes, while the staff is bringing him with a wheelchair, goes to the doctor, comes back, drop him. So we have probably each week, eight to 10 persons coming to our facility, this in top of the staff that we have there daily. And most of them are there for 10 minutes, as I explained, some of them for half an hour. Then we have a couple of families that are visiting, and also, they stay there for like 30 minutes, 15 minutes. So I wouldn't say that in front of our facility, there is a traffic jam ever. Except in the morning, like 7:30, 8 o'clock in the morning, because this street is used by the, by the families that have the kids at the school in Crespi Drive in order to park the streets.
Cabrillo story, yes, I know.
So the street is really crowded then, but you can go in every given day, 9 o'clock, 10 o'clock, and the street is basically empty. This is also one of the reasons that the families are finding our place interesting, because there is no traffic, so there is no sound, it's a really peaceful place.
Thank you very much for the detail on that, I, I do appreciate it. What we're looking at is giving you a parking exception for a, a certain amount of, of parking. And I'm, I'm hearing that there might actually be more parking there than what you're asking for. So that will, that will come up when we're just, when the commission is actually discussing it. Thank you very much for your answers on that, I'm not done yet.
I may want to give another commissioner a chance to speak, so...
Okay, I'll do that.
Yes, all right.
We can come back to me.
All right, Commissioner Stuckin.
My question is for the gentleman, how long have you been employed there?
Five years.
And am I correct that the state says you've had 16 residents there in 2018, is that correct?
Correct.
And, and when in 2018 did that begin?
So we have two controls of the states, starting from January. They were in March, in the middle of March, and then probably two weeks after, I don't know if it, it was April already or just the end of March.
Good enough. I see, I see two inspections there in February, and I see 10 Class A citations of the type that would typically be issued when a lack of fire clearance warning is given. Were any of your 10 citations for lack of fire clearance?
Not, not actually for fire clearance, actually Inspector Zalinski is not here, but we have him controlling the facility every single day, it was just an update.
Can I talk about that?
It changed the legislation, so we need to do certain upgrades or certain changes, which, as soon as we've been informed about the new law, we did it immediately and we cleared.
Yeah, it wasn't a violation, it was just, we get, ever since I've been in business, 2000, yearly, we get fire clearance with the fire inspector, I think, Zalinski, for the past 10 years. And then like a year ago, he, we had to upgrade our fire sprinkler, had to be connected with the fire department. So we had to get a new alarm system, and we had to get emergency lights. Basically, it wasn't a violation, it was, was something we had to do to update the facility.
Right, and again, I'm, I'm not talking about the state, or, sorry, the city or the county or the, by city, I'm, I'm trying... I'm, I'm specifically talking about the state violations. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Krasky. Oh, sorry, isn't it, not you?
Not me.
Ah, sorry. Commissioner Rubenstein.
Um, with regard to the RV, does the removal of the RV impact operations or in any way affect your, your work there?
No, no, RV is just parked there, I can remove it anytime.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gordon.
Thank you, Chair. First, uh, I guess I want to say a thank you very much for the work that you guys do. Um, I used to work in a residential facility for many years, so I'm familiar with what you do, and it's, it's very hard, and it's very important to our, to our community. You guys take care of the parents, the grandparents, that we can no longer take care of. And it's, it's very, very difficult work, so, uh, I wanted to say thank you for that. Um, also, based on my own personal experience, I, I know that your facilities are very closely, uh, regulated, and you get visits from licensing all the time, so I'm also aware of that. Uh, and the commissioners here should be aware that, um, there, these kinds of residential facilities are really closely scrutinized by the state agencies. I, I do want, I did see in the staff report that there was a couple instances where you guys did renovations and didn't get the building permit or didn't get the final inspection. I, whenever you guys do renovations, I want to encourage you guys to work closely with, with Planning Department.
I do. Uh, what I, when I, the final, in two thousand one, I believe, was what happened. I did go to the, the planning department when we finished, because I had about like four or five permits that I asked for. And then I was waiting to come to do my final inspection. I even went to the planning department, asked for it, because it wasn't signed, and after that, I don't know what happened. It just got out of sight. But I will call and have them come in.
Excellent, excellent. Oh, and, and I, I had one final question. There was discussion earlier about, I think there's a, is there a power chair that's-
Lift.
There's a chair lift?
Lift that goes, uh, you know, upstairs. It's been there ever since I had the facility. I replaced it twice, I just bought new ones, but it's been there ever since I bought the facility. Chairlift.
Right, and so the purpose of the, of this lift is to take the non-ambulatory residents from the first floor to the second floor, and from the second floor to the first floor?
Yeah, correct. When they are ambulatory, sometimes for elderly people, it's hard to go up the stairs, you know, and basically you use it, but we encourage them to go, uh, walking the stairs because it's good exercise, but if we need it, we use it.
Right, but so basically that it's needed in order to transport your, the residents who are on the second floor down to the first floor and vice versa?
Yeah, yeah, we don't use it. How many residents use it now?
Cool.
Two residents use it right now. So we have a capacity of sixteen, full house, and we use it for two residents only.
Okay, okay, thank you very much.
And we have some more questions from Commissioner Clifford.
Uh, yes. I, I wanted to know, did, uh, did you guys apply to the state to increase it from twelve to sixteen, or did the state come to you?
No, I did. Um, in two thousand six, I added a room to the, to the home. It was a flat roof upstairs, and I made some remodelings. And then I applied with the state to increase the capacity from twelve to sixteen. I was approved by the state, I got the license for twelve non-ambulatory, four ambulatory. I got the fire clearance for twelve non-ambulatory, four ambulatory. And ever since then, we got annual visits with clearance for this type of residence.
But you didn't get your, didn't come back and get a use permit from the city?
What happened is, I didn't know. I, I went to the city, to the planning department, I got my conditional use permit for twelve, and I presented to the state with my application, and nobody said anything, so I really didn't know I had to do this. And ever since then, we've been operating under sixth capacity of sixteen, sixteen residents.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Could you tell me what the actual scope was of a building permit two-one-six-six-four-dash-zero-one? That would have been the building permit that you pulled in two thousand and one that hasn't been signed off yet. Uh, maybe the, the building official could answer that.
I'm not sure, I wasn't around, so. I think that's, uh, to make two new-
I guess speaking on the mic, thank you.
I think it's to, uh, make two new bedrooms, I believe.
Well, table one shows the description as enlarge existing closet and convert bedroom, convert to bedroom on the second floor.
So that's, that was the, the totality of that permit that needs to be?
I mean, sometimes there's other very minor associated work, but the, the substantial work that was done is, is captured in this description.
Thank you. Okay, that covers that. Excuse me for a minute while I review my little list here. Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. At this point, I want to open up this hearing to the public. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter, there are cards in the back of the room you can fill out, bring them up to staff, and you'd have three minutes to speak. I have one card from Mr. John Keener.
Good evening. I'm John Keener, I'm a council member, and this year I'm mayor of Pacifica. I've come here tonight to express my appreciation to staff for, uh, providing an alternative to the recommended parking exception. The recommended parking exception, of course, is for three vehicles off-street and an exception of two. And on page twenty-seven, um, there's a paragraph that sort of outlines the, the alternative, um, to that, and that is to allow tandem parking, which you've already discussed, you know, where it is, uh, bringing that to four off-street spaces and therefore one, uh, exception space that would be on-street. And that's about all I have. I just wanted to thank staff for, um, highlighting that, and, uh, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I don't have any more public comment cards up here, so I'm going to close the public comment, and I'm going to bring this matter to the commission. Commissioner Clifford.
I remembered one more question for the applicant, can I ask that now?
Certainly. Uh, if the applicant can come back up, we have one more question for you.
I'm sorry to drag you back up.
No worries, my pleasure.
I had one question that I had forgotten to written, write down, and I want to ask it now. You have one staff member on at night, or actually for a twelve-hour period at night. How does that staff member get their state-required breaks in lunch, lunch break, regular breaks? How, how does that, how is that facilitated?
In a shift of twelve hours, we have ten hours working and two hours to be break. So from eight to nine in the night shift, they have one break for their dinner, and then before leaving, from seven to eight, they have their breakfast, and both meals are provided by us. So basically, in a, in a night shift of twelve hours-
So they're working-
Our staff is working ten hours.
Okay, but they're working ten hours without the standard fifteen or ten-minute break? I'm not sure exactly what the state requires, but after a certain number of hours, they're not only entitled to, but actually by law required to take a break?
Sure.
And how, how is that facilitated with only one appointment?
It's every fifteen minutes, our night staff choose to have one hour altogether and then one hour altogether, because sometimes, regardless that if they take it or not, sometimes they come later and leave earlier. So sometimes they, they want to use this time for their own benefits, and sometimes it's, it's really needed, because for instance, the night shift on Saturday doesn't have too many options with the public transportation to leave from Pacifica. They need to catch a bus. So they organize the shift that is coming after and the shift that it is before. They organize themselves in order to help each other with the commute, because something that I wanted to, to mention to, to the staff, basically caregivers, persons that are working for fourteen, fifteen dollars an hour, they, they can commute with cars, not in the Bay Area. So basically, they are depending on, on transportation with the bus and the bar.
Okay, thank you very much for your answer, I won't drag you back up here again. Uh, I also now have, uh, an additional question for, uh, our legal representation, if that's okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ask away.
Okay. City Attorney, can you, can you tell me if it's legal for, uh, under state law for somebody not to get their breaks at a, a space-time?
How is this relevant? Well, this is like the labor code, and there's certain, I'm a, I'm an employment lawyer, so I know there's specific statutes related to overnight workers at residential facilities. This is all regulated very specifically. I don't know how this is relevant to planning.
All right, so one moment here. One, two, we're not going to add a third person discussing labor employment issue here, up here, that's unagendized, so, but I will allow, uh, council to respond.
Um, I would just reiterate that labor employment issues are not before the purview of this commission at this time.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm done?
Okay. All right, I am, um, well, we brought this back to the commission. And does anyone wish to speak or have anything to say? Commissioner Rubenstein?
I'm just going to make a motion to approve the-
Okay. Before we have a second, I just want to say that I do support the parking exception where we get rid of the RV and have the tandem parking, I think that would be worth it. Commissioner Gordon.
Is, is-
I was, oh, I'm sorry, that, I'm sorry, that's you.
That's me.
Sorry, Commissioner Stegner, and then I'll get to you.
I was going to second the motion, so maybe after Tom speaks would be appropriate time.
Let's do that, Commissioner Clifford.
Okay. Quite frankly, I'm not comfortable with voting on this tonight when we haven't heard from, uh, building or the fire marshal in regards to whether or not that staircase presents a, a public safety hazard. It's, I'm, it's an important issue in terms of the safety of, safety, well-being of the occupants and of our first responders. I want to know an answer to that before I could, I could, could vote on this. And I, I would move to continue this until we can get those answers from staff.
Commissioner Gordon?
Well, let's see, first of all, I wasn't going to respond to that, I was going to respond to the parking issue. If, since there's so many, it, it sounds like there's plenty of parking, off-street parking during the day, so I'm not sure, I wasn't following what the controversy was between staff's recommendation and this parking alternative, since, is, it seems moot to me since there's plenty of parking, uh, day and night, off-street.
I think, if I could speak for staff, we were trying to expand the requirement that they provide the greatest amount of parking that was practical and feasible. And so in our opinions, there is an area to provide additional parking, but to do so would require an additional exception the applicant had not requested. And so that's, um, the controversy, if there is any, that we cannot just simply deem that a parking space without the commission affirmatively granting the exception to do so.
But so the, the exception would be to require tandem parking by the staff?
To allow tandem parking and to require the staff to use that space for parking.
I guess I just want to be, I, I don't want to be in a position of requiring staff, their staff to do tandem parking when there's obviously lots and lots of parking in the area.
Uh, well, that's certainly within the commission's discretion, uh, if it should feel that way. We were trying to find as much off-street parking as we could for this facility to account for its own parking demand, which is the standard practice that we apply to all land uses under the city's parking regulations.
Okay, thanks. And then in terms of responding to Commissioner Clifford's point, you know, I'm very, I'm, I'm, I respect Commissioner Clifford's concerns. I mean, the, the equipment that's, that's encroaching is, 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 it's necessary in order to move the patients up and down from the first floor to the second floor, so it doesn't seem like there's an, an option to- It doesn't sound like removing, uh, removing the equipment is any kind of, is any kind of option. Um, so you're stuck with it, so I guess, what would be, I guess I'm asking Commissioner Clifford then, what would be the, given, you know, assuming that that equipment has to be there, then what would be the, the remedy?
Well, uh, I'll answer that in that you're assuming that it has to be there. You're assuming that there has to be non-ambulatory people on the second floor.
Well, she, the applicant said that they were actually using that equipment for some of the ambulat- just because they're ambulatory doesn't mean that they can go up and downstairs as, as somebody with knee, knee replacements now.
I understand your argument, but my argument isn't about day-to-day use. My argument is about public safety in the event of an emergency when there is no power. They can't use it anyway and it's in the way.
Mm-hmm, so you're, so you're, what you're saying is that the equipment there would be, let's assume, let's assume the worst-case scenario, let's assume there's a fire, and let's assume a power outage.
At night, so it's dark.
At night, so it's dark. And it's smoky, exactly. So are you saying that that equipment is, would make it that, that staircase impassable?
I'm saying that it would make it much more difficult to pass, and it would definitely make it more difficult for our, our first responders to safely evacuate everybody on the, on the second floor.
Okay.
Shouldn't that be something the fire marshal evaluates instead of the planning department?
And I, what I was asking for was a continuance based on them coming, both fire marshal and the building official coming back with that information. They, they didn't have answers to those questions for me.
Right.
Okay.
I have a motion to approve, so.
Okay, we're gonna, we're, and we're gonna get to that in a second, but we, Tina?
I, I, I have a potential, um, solution perhaps, is I believe I heard the, um, building officials say that they do have chairs that fold away or move around and get out of the way. And so could a, a potential condition of approval be that they modify that equipment so that when it's not in use, it's out of the way and that stairway is not impeded in any way?
Yes, there's several options on stair lifts and different sizes. Some of them close right up, three inches, two, three inches. Again, I don't know the tolerances that are allowed by the fire code.
And that, that's where my rub comes in, is I don't know the heat of them.
But once we find that, once we find out that tolerance, uh, then I'm sure we can find a lift, because there's a lot of brand-new lifts there in a lot of houses and everything that slide right up and almost get out of the way. Some of them come down and go around the corner, so they're out of the way.
These lifts have been there for twenty-plus years, right?
Exactly.
And you've inspected this facility twenty-plus years, right? I mean, it's, it's come up-
Uh, just one moment.
The applicant said that she replaced it a couple times.
Right.
So it could have been a different style of lift. So it could have been a different style of lift at the time, or in, not in a correct position at the time of inspection, possibly.
Well, that's something that we need to find out, the tolerance is allowed, and then, once we have that information, I'm sure we can find a lift that will take into consideration, then it'll be legal.
And that wouldn't necessarily need to be a condition of approval, right? That would be something that they would just have to do within the code.
I would suggest, since this is a matter of concern to some of the commission, that it would be a condition of approval? And we could craft the condition to state that the chairlift be replaced with a model that is within the tolerances of allowed encroachment in the, is it the fire code?
Well, we're assuming it's not allowed, right, at this point?
So, I'm going to actually ask, since we're talking about something that's a capital improvement, I want to see what the applicant's viewpoint is on this and whether they'd be willing to, if it's needed, switch out the chairs or if it's possible, just to get their viewpoint on it.
I just want to say that the seats, they go up, they stay up. We put it down, only want to use it. You know, it doesn't stay horizontal, so.
So the seat's already full. Thank you. Yes?
At the beginning of this year, we update our chairs. We put the slimmest model in the market. We brought a company that is providing this type of products, and based on their catalog, we choose the slimmest. So basically, the rail normally in our two other models was wide. Right now, we reduce it because this model goes vertical, so it's not on the way of the chairs. The chair falls totally. Another thing that I want you to know is we're making every month, every two months, simulation of what to do in a case of a sinister, if something happens, in order for the staff to be updated, to be able to assist these people, because we've been seeing with the fires in Santa Rosa, so many lost of lives. So we're aware of this situation. And I can tell you that without the chairlift, probably our ability to assist for evacuation will be less than it is because we have this chair. Without the chair, probably the staff will have to grab somebody and run through the stairs. Because for all the other residents, we have an outside exit, so it's going directly from the living room to an outside stair. But for those persons that are not able to walk, as somebody who's bedridden, this chair means the difference between getting out of the building or not.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a quick question about the chair that you described. Does it have its own power system?
Sure.
Independent of the house power?
Yes, and there is no fog or dark because the fire inspection that we've been approaching in a previous question requires us to have system that shows, point out where the exits are with their own power system. So the light is there. You don't get to, like, not to see it or something. We have strong light in there.
What I'm asking is, is it a battery-powered backup system?
Yes, yes, sure.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Hold on a second while I regain control.
I have a suggested condition.
I'm going to listen to you. Yes.
Okay. The suggested condition would be that the applicant shall provide chair, the existing chairlift model and specifications. If the chairlift does not meet fire code requirements, the lift shall be replaced by a compliant model. This condition shall be implemented within 30 days of project approval and inspected by fire department staff and building department staff.
Thank you. Before I move on to the lights, I like that suggestion, and I like the idea of the parking exception because I like the idea of really trying to squeeze the parking spots out of folks who are trying to look for parking exceptions in general. And we've had a lot of parking exception requests come through in the last year or so, and I think it's just a really good city policy to try to squeeze as many parking places as we can when that kind of a request comes before. So that's why I like the parking exception.
Are you talking about the removing of the RV?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Yeah. Removal of the RV and the tandem parking exception.
Thank you.
That would get us down to one parking exception. So the number of parking exceptions goes from two to one, if I understand that correctly?
That's correct. And to accomplish that, we would need to make a couple minor changes to conditions three and four, which if the commission goes that route, I can read into the record.
Oh, excellent. Thank you. Okay. Anyway, I said my piece. I'm going to go through these lights, maybe stale, maybe not. I'm going to go, well, are you?
Be quick.
You're going to be quick? Commissioner Rubenstein?
Yeah, I would just like to reiterate the mayor's thoughts about the planning commission, the planning department's creative use of this, to be able to reduce the parking without completely eliminating, reduce it from five to four, basically, by taking out the RV. And, you know, many of the questions that we have here are geared towards the operations, which I think are outside of what we're trying to approve here. So I like this project. I'm glad the applicant is trying to correct something, and we should support that. So that's my view.
And then I'm...
And what's the status of my motion?
It's tabled, but on hold, but still live. Before I get to Commissioner Clifford, I do want to say thanks to Commissioner Clifford for making the case or making the need known for as much parking as possible for this facility, because it looks like we will need that parking exception. Commissioner Clifford?
Yeah, that was what I wanted to reiterate is, in terms of the parking exceptions, that it does actually look like there are more than the three employees during the day that this was being based on. There's actually the administrator plus additional people coming, be it physical therapists, visiting nurses, whatever, that are coming to the facility, maybe not on a daily basis, but on a regular basis, I would say. So it may turn out that we're still granting the same number of exceptions even if we get rid of the, need to grant the same number of exemptions, even if we include the tandem parking where the trailer is, because there are more people than three that we started with. We started with three, he said four, then there's, then there's himself, then there's, then there's the various visiting people at other times. So we're actually at at least five during the day from what the testimony I heard is, does staff concur with that?
Well, it seems like some number greater than three could be at the site at any time. I think what staff's analysis was based upon is the code's requirement for off-street parking. And again, it may not be precise to this particular facility's operational characteristics, but we have to measure against the code that's on the books. And so that's the basis for our analysis.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it. I'll shut up.
Much appreciated. Commissioner Stegman?
I agree with Commissioner Campbell on the parking exception in general. You know, more parking spots makes your property more valuable, and the applicant does not appear to have a problem deleting the RV from the location. A quick 10-second question for the fire inspector. Does the DSS defer completely to the local fire inspection authority?
In what manner?
All things fire.
Yes. When a residential care facility wants to open and the applicant applies for what's called an 850 form, which is a fire clearance request, we go in and address our fire concerns. If there's building concerns, we address those, we refer those to the building department proper permits. And once the fire department signs off on the 850 form, it's then turned over to the Department of Community Care Licensing, and then they implement whatever physical requirements or special requirements for, you know, sleeping, sleeping or feeding or things like that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gordon?
Thank you, Chair. So I want to make a motion that brings this ship to shore.
I think we already have a motion.
You've had a motion?
Yeah, but we've, okay, so maybe the mover, is the mover of the motion willing to adopt the direct, planning director's proposed condition, right? Do you remember that?
With regard to the lift?
Yes. Do you want to have it restated?
Yeah, I'd restate my motion to approve with the new condition regarding the lift.
What about the RV tandem parking? We're going with that in your motion?
Yeah, and RV, removal of the RV and the creation of two tandem parking spots. I'm personally not concerned whether staff parks in those tandem spots or not, but, you know, I'm not willing to make any kind of change.
So are we clear on the, on the motion? It's got the...
Well, Chair, I would ask that the maker of the motion agree to the changes that I'm about to read. So to condition number three, which is on packet page 42, to that condition, I would add an extra clause that says, "And to create an additional off-street parking space for facility staff." And then to condition four, in the second paragraph, be revised to read, "Applicants shall require and take reasonable measures to ensure that two employees," parentheses, "caregivers," "shall park in the side yard parking area during daytime hours," parentheses, "between 7:30 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. in a tandem configuration," period. "Applicants shall also ensure additional staff park in the provided off-street parking facilities and not on Lederer Way."
That sounds good. Can we get something in there about signage to make sure it's employee-only or something like that? Or is that turned?
I'm not prepared to complete an analysis of the city's sign standards and whether the signage would be appropriate. It'd be my preference not to include the signage if possible.
Let's see. We've had a motion.
Yeah, well, I'd like to say that I approve the motion as, or the adoption of the conditions.
And we've had a second. So let's vote. All right. And that passes. Factor one. So, congratulations, you have an approved project. Anyone aggrieved by the action of the planning commission has 10 calendar days to appeal the decision in writing to the city council. All right. On to the next public hearing, and we have annual review of a use permit for a 7-Eleven store at 700 Hickey Boulevard. The recommended action is to adopt a attached resolution, which we'll soon hear about. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Senior Planner Christian Murdock. The annual review being conducted this evening is in response to the requirement of condition of approval number 56 of City Council Resolution Number 40-2015. The city council imposed the annual review requirement as part of its approval of the 7-Eleven project at 700 Hickey Boulevard on appeal on September 14th, 2015. Staff has evaluated the conditions of approval, rather, staff has evaluated the conditions at the site as compared to the conditions of approval, and in staff's opinion, the site substantially complies with all applicable requirements. Staff's assessment included consultation with the police chief and code enforcement officer, as well as a site inspection. As noted in the staff report, the police chief and code enforcement officer have identified no issues with the site with respect to public safety or nuisance conditions or public complaints. Staff's inspection did note a small number of discrepancies, primarily with property maintenance issues, but also with the alcohol sales area within the store. 7-Eleven promptly corrected these issues upon notice by staff, which enabled staff to recommend finding the store in substantial compliance with its permit terms. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Stegman? Oh, not you.
You're required to respond.
Oh, I got it. You know what? I have old buttons. I didn't clear them. Wow. Commissioner Clifford?
My only question to staff is this handout we received this evening, the 7-Eleven Good Neighbor Plan. I'm assuming, but I don't want to do that, this came from 7-Eleven. This is a document of theirs that they give to their staff.
That's correct. As required by the conditions of approval, 7-Eleven needed to prepare a Good Neighbor Plan. Shortly after the project approval in 2015, 7-Eleven submitted draft versions of these documents to city staff. We did review and comment, and 7-Eleven accepted staff's comments into this final document that you have before you, and that's available to the public in the rear of the chamber.
Thank you very much.
Okay. I don't see any more questions for staff, so I'm going to allow the applicant to come up. And they'll have 10 minutes.
I'm the real estate manager for 7-Eleven. I really don't have anything to say. We got the notification, we had a couple of things that we needed to clear up, we got somebody right on it, cleared it up. We have no issues.
Okay. Well, thank you. I don't see any lights up here with questions for you, but stay close.
All right.
All right. This point, I want to open up this matter to the public. Anybody who wants to talk about this issue would fill out a card in the back. You'd have three minutes. Present the card to staff over there. But I don't see anyone with a card. Oh, I see some motion. Okay, it looks like we are going to have a public comment. So just state your name for the record, and then if you could, please fill out a card and...
They just didn't bring, I'm sorry, I did fill out a card, I just don't think it was brought to the front. We'll get it to you.
Oh, okay.
It's disappeared.
Well, maybe we could fill out another one and get it up after, after, you can fill it out after. That's fine.
Good evening. I'm Betty Duran. I live at 694 Parkview Circle. Many of you may recognize me from our battle with 7-Eleven previously. This evening, I'd like to comment, well, first of all, hello, staff. Good to see you again. I recognize many of you, as well as commissioners. My comments and concerns are about 10 conditions of approval. I'm going to list them quickly. I hope I can cover them all, but they are for staff's benefit. Condition five, 12, 15, 16, 49, 56, 57, 59, 61, and 62. The Fairmont community remains vigilant with respect to the 7-Eleven. We never wanted it, we wanted a gas station, we have it, so now we must deal with it. I'm going to go over these conditions in no particular order. First of all, condition 56. I think it's a good thing. This is a condition that deals with an annual review. I don't want to assume anything, but as a community, we are understanding that this is an annual review that will continue. This is probably directed more at the city than 7-Eleven, but maybe not. Condition 49. This is a condition that can require them to paint their curbs prior to the certificate of occupancy. One of the things the community probably doesn't understand is occupancy doesn't mean the same thing as grand opening. The grand opening happened December 20th, which is a full silks month before the certificate of occupancy. So of course, the community was stressed when the curbs weren't painted yellow and you had cars and standing water along gateway for several months. Condition 57. I'd like a copy for our files of the letter that was required of the applicant requesting corporate involvement in the oversight of all of the 7-Elevens. The Good Neighbor Plan, we'd also like a copy, I believe it's in the back. Condition 59. First year. That information identifying the process to file a complaint with the city, it's information that is posted inside the premises. We'd like for that to remain. I don't believe I just have 40 seconds, so let me continue. I don't believe I just have forty seconds, so let me continue. Condition five, landscaping, uh, this is really, really abysmal. You can look at the plants across the street, at Fairmont Mall, and at the apartments, which are, if not the same, almost the same, and they're, they're not well tended to, they're not, I think is the word, healthy. They should be an irrigation system, was it installed, is it in use, is there a problem? I'm gonna move on to twelve, this is really significant. Condition twelve was in respect to al- alcohol sales. They were limited, 7-11 was limited to three square foot, feet. I don't believe this is...
You have a few more seconds because of a little, that little snap we had in the background.
They were limited to three square feet in floor area and nine cubic feet in volume. Just a bit of a timeline, June the fifteenth, the city notified 7-11 of this annual review. June the twenty-first, 7-11 responded that they had been out to the site and quote, "All the COAs have been met." July third, the city notifies 7-11 once again that they are not in compliance with several COAs. One of them had to do with alcohol. This is significant because this was an issue, a major issue for our community. The alcohol display, uh, at that time was, uh, fifty-six percent above in square footage and six point fifty-six feet, cubic feet, seventy-three percent more than they should have been. Staff reported these findings and 7-11 corrected the discrepancies. However, when I read staff report, it says additionally, uh, excuse me, when I read staff report, it is not correct, they are not in compliance, three square feet is what is compliance, and according to what staff wrote, it's three point twenty-one. I know that may seem insignificant to many, but it is not insignificant to our neighborhood. This was critical for the neighborhood, alcohol, hours of operation, the unsightliness of the, of the site. In other words, it doesn't look like the rest of the, the commercial properties, the apartments...
I sw- I was gonna thank you, I wanted you to finish your point, but I think that now, and now actually I do have to cut you off because it is three minutes.
Okay, just one sentence more. As a community, we realize no one is coming to save us. We have to be our savior.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, um, I don't see any other cards or public comments coming, so I'm gonna close the public comment and I'm going to bring this back to the Commission. Oh, I'm sorry. Applicant, if you wish to respond, you may. I'm, I'm getting a nodding head no, so, okay, um, now I'm bringing this back to the Commission. What say the Commission? All right, Commissioner Stegic.
I have a question on, uh, condition fifty-seven, I'm gonna read it aloud here. Applicants shall send a letter to the 7-11 corporate headquarters emphasizing the need for corporate involvement in the oversight of all 7-11 stores in Pacifica. 7-11 corporate headquarters shall affirmatively engage in oversight of 7-11 stores to ensure compliance with all conditions of approval and city ordinances. Do we have a, a date that letter was sent?
I, I don't have the date available. I did confirm, uh, prior to the issuance of a building permit, that the applicant had sent it, but, uh, we do not have the letter, or the date that it was sent.
And we have no copy of the letter?
That's correct.
Can we request a copy of the letter?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, um, well, I had just a question about the, uh, three foot, three square foot alcohol, um, let's see, well, I've lost the condition, maybe someone can help me out.
For twelve, I believe.
Packet page fifty-nine.
Thank you, yeah, okay, so condition twelve, um, we did get a public comment that it's over three feet, is there, I'm just curious on staff's point of view.
Yeah, that's, uh, there's no, uh, excuse for that, it looks like it may have been an oversight on my part in preparation of the report, and so, uh, we can certainly arrange to ensure that that gets another point two square feet reduced, uh, to fully comply with the condition.
Ah, great, thank you. Okay, Commissioner Gordon?
Thank you Chair. Um, so the member of the community who just spoke, uh, gave us a lot of information in a very quick format, and it, it makes it challenging for us to digest it when we're on the sort of cusp of, of, um, resolving the, resolving the, uh, whatever it is, what is this?
New review.
Right.
Approving the resolution.
Yeah, so when we're, I mean, we're being asked to adopt this resolution, and you've given us a lot of information just verbally, very quickly, what I'd, and I appreciate it, and I encourage you to come out and speak and, and share with us all the information that you find, since this is an annual review and it's gonna happen again, what I'd encourage you to do next time is actually to put it in writing ahead of the meeting, a, a, a week or two ideally ahead of the meeting, so we have a chance to, to review it and really digest it, and then we have a chance to, to go back to the applicant when he's here, and we can, uh, further do fact-finding. So that's what I would request.
I'm sorry, we can't, we can't take further comment.
But anyway, and I do appreciate you coming out and, 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 and speaking.
Uh, yeah, you know, I'd like to add a gloss to that, sometimes we do get public comments up here, and, and I, I was on the Commission, uh, as I think many of us were when we, um, had this item before us, and it was very controversial, and it took a, it took a lot of work, um, and sometimes we do get comments on the fly that make us want to continue an item or not, uh, but it is helpful, um, to get them in advance, and I, I do understand sometimes that can and can't happen, and best efforts were made by the public. Um, so I do want to thank the Speaker for, for coming up. Commissioner Rubenstein?
Yeah, I would just like to thank the applicant for working with the, uh, planning staff to correct whatever, you know, deficiencies were in, uh, in his operations, and that gives me, uh, optimism that he'll continue doing that and work towards, uh, making sure that each of the, uh, conditions are met.
Commissioner Stegic.
I have another question on fifty-seven, the second half is, um, 7-11 corporate headquarters shall affirmatively engage in oversight of 7-11 stores to ensure compliance with all conditions of approval and city ordinances. Do we have any, uh, information that 7-11 corporate headquarters has, has done that?
Well, I think, uh, the lack of, uh, code enforcement history is evidence to me that, uh, there have not been significant concerns about the conditions of the stores. I don't have records of the number of visits or site inspections 7-11 has conducted itself, but what we have is, uh, a nearly nonexistent record of incidents or code enforcement violations at, uh, the 7-11 store that's been analyzed tonight.
As a condition of the certificate of occupancy, did we measure that liquor space at that time?
Yes, we did, as part of the final inspection, uh, of the facility prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy.
And, and what was the, the liquor space at that time? Was it in compliance at the time we measured it?
It was, and it was not point two-one square feet over, it was absolutely at or below the limitation at that time.
I ins- I inspected that liquor cooling area today, and, um, basically it's the top three shelves of adjustable height, freezer, probably the size of a normal home free, fridge, cooler, whatever it is, I'm assuming it's under thirty-two degrees. Is there a way to make the, um, the capacity of that cooler less flexible, um, that it couldn't be eighty square feet tomorrow and three, three square feet when you look at it, and then, uh, just expanded the second you leave?
Uh, I, I don't know of a good mechanism, uh, for doing that.
I don't know, maybe it's, maybe it's a painted line, maybe it's tape, maybe it's a separate fridge of that, um...
Well, to impose, to impose any additional condition of approval would require a public hearing, um, that's not been proposed.
Well, it's my understanding that they've been non-compliant with this condition of approval since day one.
Uh, that is not the case in my knowledge, uh, and so, the area was inspected by me personally at the time, um, and I am confident that it was compliant at the time of the inspection, at some point between then and, uh, my inspection this year, the cooler, uh, went out of compliance, and the applicant took steps, it thought brought it into compliance. Uh, my measurements I took and reported in the report indicate that the floor area is non-compliant, and is something that I will follow up on to correct. The volume is compliance, but to impose any additional condition or requirement would require a public hearing, and that's not been agendized or proposed this evening.
Is there any method to, uh, ensure that that fridge remains in compliance?
Uh, we have a sign-up in the store indicating the number to call if the public believes there's a violation at the site, um, and additionally, the next annual review will result in another inspection by planning department staff.
And, and if it was determined to be over at that time, the, the sanction would be another review in a year?
Well, the sanction would be, I would imagine, uh, requesting 7-11 to fix it, and reporting the discrepancy as part of the, the subsequent annual review.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, Commissioner Gordon?
I'm ready to make a motion, unless there's more discussion.
Let's see it.
Uh, based on the evidence, I see that the store, 7-11 store is in substantial, I think is in substantial compliance with the use permit, so I'm prepared to move, to adopt the attached resolution finding the operation of a 7-11 convenience store at seven hundred, seven hundred Hickey Boulevard is substantially in accord with the use permit UP zero four one dash fifteen.
Commissioner Clifford?
I'll second that motion.
Had a motion, and a second, please vote. All right, that passes, and congratulations, we have an approved resolution. Suppose I should read this. Anyone agree by the action of the planning commission has ten calendar days to appeal the decision? I think that's correct, for a resolution? Counsel? Okay, thank you. Okay, um, moving on to Commissioner Communications, anyone? Commissioner Clifford?
Oh, I just wanted to report that the, uh, library advisory committee did not meet this month, so, again, I have nothing to report.
All right. Um, go ahead, I know what you're gonna ask.
I'd like to ask for Commissioner Campbell the status on the medical marijuana operations.
So we, we are processing the four applications, they have, uh, all received incomplete letters, and we are awaiting, um, responsive materials.
And they're for recreational and medical marijuana, not medical marijuana exclusively.
Correct, thank you. Um, is there, is there a process by which we'll fulfill any remaining permits after this process is over and, and we still have permits we have not yet issued?
Uh, yes, so, so far as the, um, limitations for each of the overlay zones is, is not overburden, I guess is the right word, we can continue to move down the, the list of prioritized, um, applications.
At the last meeting, I think someone had mentioned an, an actor who had opened a pop-up marijuana store without any sort of approval there, has there been any, uh, status change on their location?
Uh, I wasn't at the last meeting.
Uh, we are continuing to pursue those code enforcement violations.
And is, is it necessary that a, that a, uh, specific complaint is made against that organization to have that inspected, or is it just automatic?
Um, if they do not allow staff to go in and inspect it, we can, uh, request an inspection warrant, so it just depends on the situation and how cooperative that particular business owner is.
But i- is there any mechanism that would send staff there?
Uh, I'm not, I'm not sure I understand the question, is...
Is it necessary that someone specifically complain about a business location to have it inspected?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Has an inspect, yeah, thank you. Has an inspection warrant actually been pursued by the city, or?
Uh, for one location.
Okay. Do we have the addresses? Do we know the addresses or the, the more specific locations of the four that have been approved?
Oh, you mean they have applications in?
Yeah.
Yes, we do, I don't have them memorized.
Sure.
But we can, we can let you know where those applications are coming up.
Maybe for the next meeting.
We have, I would call it a rather robust page on the city's website, um, that is available at the main cityofpacifica.org page. Cannabis business licensing is one of the main, uh, tabs, tabs that's available to click. On that page, we have an explanation of the phase one, phase two, phase three processes, phase three being the phase we're in currently with the, uh, review of the marijuana use permits. There's a listing of all of the qualified applicants, the lottery results, and additional information that might be of interest.
Oh, excellent, including the locations.
Including the addresses and the name of the applicants and so forth.
Great, thank you. Um, well, Commissioner Clifford?
Uh, I wanted to take this opportunity, uh, to thank staff for all their hard work. I'm sorry that I didn't do this earlier when, uh, both the fire marshal and the building official were here, but I do appreciate all the effort that was put in, uh, into tonight, and, and your ongoing efforts. I want, want to make sure I, I let you know that I do appreciate it.
I don't know if this is stale or not, Commissioner...
Now, do we have any idea when we expect any medical mari- sorry, any recreational or medical marijuana revenues to, uh, appear in the city's coffers?
I'm gonna cut off discussion on medical marijuana at this point, until it's a Gen Diet at a meeting.
Thank you.
No, okay. Um, thanks, I was monitoring that, I only had two of us speaking so far, so, but I appreciate the caution. Um, all right, uh, any others? Commissioner Stegic?
What is the city's, uh, stance on people living in recreational vehicles in yards?
So, on private property?
Correct.
So that, that is not permitted, um, they need to be in a authorized recreational vehicle park, and so we do have one in town, um, and also I would say that, uh, the State Department of Housing and Community Development does not, uh, list or permit RVs as permanent residences, they're supposed to be, you know, recreational vehicles, um, so, I guess that's a long way of saying they're not, not permitted on private property.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any more Commission Communication, Staff Communication?
I just wanted to, uh, let the Commission know that on, uh, the sixth of August, that's the first meeting in August, I'd like to plan to bring to you just a mid-year update, I usually do those once a year, but there has been quite a, a few new, um, assignments on the council's work plan for the, for the department this year, and some of them are also ongoing assignments, so I just wanted to give you, uh, just an update on everything that's going on, and it's also a way for me to address several of the questions that have popped up here and there, uh, schedule for general plan amendments, um, updates on accessory dwelling units and state law changes, so I'll make kind of a more comprehensive, um, report back to you, um, at the next meeting.
Much appreciated, thank you. Okay, well, we've come to the end of the meeting. Commissioner Gordon?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, Commissioner Stegic?
Second.
Had a motion, a second, please vote. And that passes unanimously, and this meeting is now over. Adjourned, thank you.